You want to, when Kate runs in, have him remain standing so he can go right into...
He can't stand up.
I should open his chair.
Let's all be standing so when he does get their way to start.
If he can't catch a breath. It's getting bad. He's supposed to be on oxygen, but he doesn't like to carry it around.
Okay, there he is.
We're just gonna get started.
Get started, hey.
Soon as you stop, we'll start. Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm gonna hold on to your chair while you sit. So it doesn't fall over. You did it.
Don't feel... What term do you need?
The alternative is not very good.
I was gonna say.
I agree.
How come everybody agrees with me?
I saw a funny reel about, I was two of these, and one had bought an urn. And her son was like, "What is this?" And she's like, "Well, I'm eighty-six now, and I'm having a hard time walking, and I can't drive, and that looks like a good option."
Wow.
Eighty-six.
Okay.
Hey.
Can I move to approve the meetings, or the meeting minutes from April?
Can I second them, or am I approved?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll second that. I'll approve. See, I'm on this thing.
I know. I hit the reins. I approved to pay the mill bills for April.
Sorry, how's that meet you? Say, I'll second. She was so cute. She just made motion to approve the bills.
Oh, second it, or is that our bill?
No. All in favor, even though you didn't see the bill.
I'll make a request if I don't.
Pretty good. Okay.
Sorry.
We've got a time agreement.
So that's the law enforcement agreement, and the sheriff has approved the changes that we had made to it. And I have brought her back from the county prosecutor's audit. And so I gave Brandon Dolly first mare. A bunch of crap about that last night to Danny Pope's brother, and get that email returned to me. So we should be done, but I have her back from the county yet. I think we're in good shape.
So are we going to vote on it?
No, not yet. No real signature, yeah. Yeah, but it's, anyway, just push it to the next one. The county approval and signatures and sheriff has approved and... So, the right-of-way permits that she would ask, or we put in draft together, we're gonna turn that off for everybody. Fairly simple as far as requiring the permit, requiring to Idaho Public Works Construction Standards, insurance, the bond, a year warranty on their backfilling and patching, and if they violate it, it's misdemeanor. But they didn't review it, and when we put it off for next month, they didn't probably hear this.
Okay.
I'll try to read it right now, but...
Yeah. Alright. So that's all included in this? Nope. Yes. We'll get to that. But it is, it should have been, well, maybe I missed you.
No.
I thought I had it. I thought I had it. Serious, serious. No, I'm the one who sent it. I thought I had it.
You have public works.
Well, I think that one's, you know, I think that one is.
I have electronic version. So we'll wanna keep it as electronic version, so that we can have it. So if you just give your email or something, alright?
Yeah, I have a public works one, which is based on public works.
They're okay.
Yeah.
Oh, see, that's cool. I don't know what I know. Okay.
That would be good, to be able to go through.
The assignment is to take these all in.
And you know what, I'm expecting.
Alright. So this one and... Add that big one. This one. Yeah.
Okay.
Alright.
So the other right-of-way permit was mine homework for you, and big packet, big packet of Robert's homework for you.
Okay. Alright, Brian, you're up. What's your maintenance report?
Well, I, I did quite, but I still have problems. This, oh, it went out both sides, that's what it did. So, this is, you can kinda look, this is what the ponds look like before. And then on this side, you can kinda see, this is what it looks like after. We've done a lot of cleaning over there. It's taken us quite a bit of time to get it that way. A lot of tree removal, and a lot of burning grass. Yeah, printed on two sides, I apologize.
That's okay.
I wondered where it went. But we did get that done, we had some help with a gentleman that needed to do some community service, and he got some community service time and some smoke inhalation while he was at it. But it's cleaned up pretty good, I've also been working on...
Can I ask, like, where the levels are at?
Yeah.
Are they being changed?
You bet. As far as the sewers are concerned, we are pumping back into our sewers this whole month. And just so that you know, we are pumping, on average, about thirty-two thousand gallons a day into those ponds. And we have not dropped or raised an inch. So, just...
They haven't raised.
Right? So just, just to put that, that means there's thirty-two thousand gallons going into those ponds a day? That means thirty-two thousand gallons is evaporating today. We are sitting really well, and that's, we've had a really cold, cold month. So, they're actually doing very well.
And the rain, too. And our liquid fill, or the water lower on stuff like that? It was down another $200, and about $450 from last year this time.
Holy cow.
Wowzers.
So, yeah, that's...
Hey, God.
Unfortunately, I'm spending that, having people help me work on stuff.
That's okay, we're breaking it.
Which is putting us ahead for next year.
Right. I apologize for the learning curve. I did have, I had our electrician back, and I had T-Ton Communications back to try and help me get figured out how to... Yeah, they run our control panel for our pumps, is T-Ton Communications. And what it comes down to is, T-Ton Communications really doesn't wanna... They will, if we push the issue, they'll upgrade their system. But they're kinda want to kinda sit status quo. And it doesn't really play friendly with, with the VFDs that we're putting in. So we're gonna, there might be some adjustments, and I, we may have to change our tune a little bit, eventually go to a new SCADA system, even though I didn't want to. But I'm gonna try and, I, I think we can, I think we can go through this year. We've got a quote for a new VFD for our thirty-horse pump, which I'm hoping doesn't have to go online for another thirty days or so. Cause that ten-horse pump is, it's absolutely keeping up with everything so far. And it is, it's, the highest I've seen it go is about seventy thousand gallons in a twenty-four hour period. And that's a lot of water for that little ten-horse pump. But it's keeping up, and it's saving us money, so as long as it can do that, I'm, I'm hoping it's gonna stay there. But we did get a quote back for a new VFD for the thirty horse, and it's just a matter of me telling him to go ahead and get it coming. And that way, at least the two, the ten-horse and the thirty-horse can communicate together. Right now, it's, it's kinda wishy-washy whether it does or not. And I'm kinda flying the blind, because the SCADA won't send me any, it won't send me any alarms. So if the water goes off, I have no idea unless, say, somebody calls me, or I happen to see it, come over here and see it. Part of the problem was, at some point, I don't know when it happened, sometime before me, somebody has actually unhooked the dialer on the SCADA system. They actually physically pulled the fuses out of it, so it doesn't dial. So that's problem number one, and then problem number two, we didn't know it requires a landline.
I don't think I do either, cause you don't say anything.
So right now, it is, it's blind. It can't tell me anything, other than me walking into the next room and looking at it.
Like dial-up internet.
So, yeah, it's, so what was, what it's supposed to do is, if one of the pumps shuts off, it's supposed to call me or send me a text saying, "Hey, it shut off, and this pump's gonna start running." It's not gonna do any of that, cause obviously, it's not... So, we're gonna have to, if we continue on, we're gonna have to either put in another landline or figure another line for that to at least send me the alerts. So that's, that's kinda where we're sitting with those pumps. I did get a pump coming down in Blackfoot. They said that they can rebuild both our fire pump, which is a forty-horse pump, and our ten-horse pump that's running right now. And so, as soon as the thirty horse gets online and we start using it, I'm gonna yank the forty and the ten and have them rebuild, so that they can be back in line and ready if we need to use them. And I, and I've probably mentioned that before, that forty-horse fire pump, it's an emergency-only pump, and I don't know when the last time it was actually ever turned on. It's had some leaks and some issues, so a guy just shut it off. So I have no idea.
That's okay.
So I, I'm hoping to get it running so that we can do it. So in the process of us playing with the pumps, a week ago, I don't know, you probably heard, if you're Facebook followers, or if you saw the, we posted it on the window here at the post office, we had a low-pressure event. It just means that our water went below the EQ standard of twenty psi. It, it just means that it required a little bit more work for me, because we then had to post it that we had a low-pressure event. We did go right back up. But we did have to have a water test, which, just so you know, it came back later that day, our water is just fine. But then I also got the opportunity to cycle some of our hydrants.
Yeah, I saw you.
I, I may have asked. I hope it wasn't too...
I thought we knew there was a spy, I'm like, "Oh, I know what's going on there." Like, where are my kitties?
Part of that procedure was to post the notice that we had a low-pressure event. And then I started at the wells, and I started flushing their hydrants. I did a little over half of them. And we flushed them all in this direction, so hopefully, they all came out clean. There was one, the one right across from you, Brittany, I'm not saying it to you, but that one came out a little bit dirty, but it was so hard to open. I, I wonder if anybody's ever opened it?
It did, cause they flood my basement with it.
Oh, did they?
Yeah.
Okay. When did they do that?
Oh, it's probably been...
They shot it that direction?
Yeah.
Why would they do that?
I don't know, I don't know.
Herdens have such a great big old lawn there, eh?
I think it was before Herd had a lawn there, cause this was like, I mean, before the...
Or not, was it just a field?
Yeah.
I'm trying to think when that, I mean, that's been, I would say, maybe eight years ago.
I tried to get it in a direction where it wasn't gonna flood basements. It's difficult, I, I can, I may work on getting a different adapter to put on there so that it doesn't spray water, it goes into a box and circulates.
Do you have one?
I have an adapter, it's just a, it's a big fan, and so it just shoots it up, up in the air. Just like a big sprinkler. Five hundred gallons a minute. So, it's a lot of water. So I, I may work at doing something a little bit better, so, cause some of them, I didn't realize how far I was spraying, and it got a little close to some of the houses, Dial and Gina's old house over there.
Yeah, it's... Well, I think my house sits in a hole, I really do think it sits in a hole. Cause in the winter, when it starts to melt, it comes from both directions. So, nothing you could do.
But I, so that was done. I've been doing some maintenance on the brush mower, and I did mow the wellhouses. And when I pulled back into the yard, the tractor was leaking some of the oil I had to tear apart. It's not one thing, it's another. So I did get started mowing, the ponds need to be, those pictures are a month old, and so the ponds do need to be mowed. I, I've been into town. They're looking at, they're trying to fix the existing oil cooler, that's what was leaking. It's gonna cost us about fifty bucks, if that doesn't fix the problem.
Holy God.
I know. He sent me that text, and I'm like, "I'm not gonna fix it." But if that doesn't fix it, we're looking at about, close to two grand for a new oil cooler for that tractor. So I, it's a bracket.
Superbly tractor.
It is, it is. I, I've been pricing those too, and that's way cheaper than a new tractor.
Did you ever figure out why our water was dropping, or, remember when you first started, we thought people were coming in spilling from our water hydrants, did you ever figure that out?
I still can't find, I have no idea.
I was just curious, cause you talked about our hydrant, did you know anything?
Well, I, I haven't, but I, I would ask that if people, if you see or know that, if you see somebody call up to a hydrant, if you wouldn't mind letting somebody know.
Take a picture.
Yeah, cause it, it is, it's absolutely against the law, really. If I, yeah, it's stepped above our water.
When they did ours, it was actually the fire department, so I don't know.
Yeah, so the fire department has the, that's, that's okay.
Is that what they...
We're talking about like...
But no, probably in the week more, four hours.
We're talking like install, or be filling up his water truck.
Yeah.
For construction purposes.
Yeah, that was the fire department that came.
It's, it's been early in the morning, like, three, four o'clock in the morning, it's been late at night.
Does it look, is this the time?
So I don't know who's doing it, but the problem with, when you exercise those hydrants, there's a, there's a proper way to turn them on and to turn them off. And if you do it incorrectly, you can absolutely damage it, to the point where we would have to tear it apart.
They must not be doing it anger. How sure are you that they're doing this, a water truck?
Well, with us playing with the SCADA, we take some things that I can't see it anymore. But the SCADA was monitoring it, and you would see it. It, it bumps up, and we're pumping this amount of water for about ten minutes, and then it drops off. So it's absolutely somebody filling the tank. You can, you can almost, it's accurate enough, before we switch things around, that you can almost figure the gallons. And it is, it's about five thousand gallons. So that's a water truck. But I, I, I did some switching, I gave up the, I sacrificed watching the water flow on there so that I could have the switch that I could turn the pumps on and off. So I, I can't, I can't see it as of a week ago.
Have you done the test of putting something on to see which one they're using?
I, that is one that's, we're gonna be doing, and we'll put a paint marker on them and see, and start looking at them and see which one they're using. Because they do it randomly. But I can tell you that the thirteen that I cycled, I don't know that guys ever... Paper's so hard to open. Wow. So I picked the ones that maybe haven't been exercised in a while.
When you say hard help, are you talking about the cap or the valve?
The valve itself. Well, I mean, we're talking, it's been not used in a while.
So the shaft, the stem, the stem is rusted up.
Is corroded a little, and, and that's part of why we exercise them, is to make sure that they're moving easy and so that if we did have a fire, they're easy for the firemen to activate.
Are we supposed to test those as a, like, fire code type thing?
That's, that's, I am supposed to exercise them throughout the year.
I don't know, I know it. I was asked a lot of urban work.
Well, I know the fire districts right now are going through their fire evaluations for insurance purposes, so they come through and exercise them once in a while throughout the following eight years.
I was gonna say, cause now when I get thinking about who was out there when they were flooding my yard, it was Bruce Anthony. And you had been the fire.
And I, I really, the guy was supposed to do it, and I don't know that they believe that he was doing it. And so I, I do know Randy Adams has come up and done at least one. And so I was gonna report back to him and let him know that we are exercising. And I marked them down, I took pictures, they have documentation of which ones I exercised and, and before the end of the year, or at least, and I only have to do so many a year, but I'm gonna try to get all the rest of them exercised before the end of the year. And then we'll, I'll, I'll keep track of which, which ones I'm doing, and make sure that they're all exercised at least once a year.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, we're working on it, I, it seems like sometimes I take two steps forward and three steps back, but I'm getting there.
I have one question. We talked once about streetlights.
Yes.
I was just, I was gonna get...
I'm looking, I gotta get on their website, cause I just got a thing in the mail from, with my power bill, and I, I think you can now do it online. Guy was saying you have to, the way he was doing it is you have to call in with the power pole number, and it's a touch, you know, the recorded operator guy.
Yeah.
And put in the coordinates for your pole, and he says it takes like fifteen minutes per line or something. And I don't know, so I haven't tried it, but that is on my list of things, yes.
Well, and do they have a thing, you know, are these so old that they could, could the power company...
Well, that's, I was just talking to Robin the other day about it, cause they were sending this, in my old bill, talking about using LEDs to save and conserve energy, and I'm like, "Yeah, but we're still using sodium vapor lights in the streets." So I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna propose that they come in and change all of our lights to LED. I don't know how far I'll get.
Yeah.
Well, I know Locking Mount Power has been putting ads on YouTube about changing all these different companies and stuff, maybe churches and stuff, changing all the lights to LED, so... You know, they're, they're, they are doing something, but trying to get, you know, us in line, maybe. Well, I don't power on paper most of it, so, and everything, they came through and did City Hall and Blackfoot and stuff. And so we asked why, like, I mean, why would you, and that's just decreasing their revenue. Well, they're maxing out their hydroelectric camps, so it's cheaper for them to replace everybody's lights.
To replace.
And then not, then happen to like Power from California, then they stay within their...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so it's cheaper for them to provide these programs than to buy the expensive power and so on.
And maybe because always called to have homes changed for a while, you know? I'm not sure they have record of it, but they probably don't really...
Guy said it was quite a pain to do, and that's why he didn't like doing it. So I need to just, I need, need to do a little bit more investigating of that.
Maybe they've updated, made it simpler or some way.
That's what I'm hoping is, that, cause I saved the thing out of my bill, and I'm gonna go onto their webpage and, and see if I can do it from their webpage, and not do that call-in dialing.
And you can report an outage, I don't think you can do that.
You would think, that technology is, is moving way fast, faster than I can keep up with it.
Well, we're still in the nineties.
Well, we're trying not to be everything you're asking. But I did get your branch cut.
I noticed, I was gonna say that. Still a barrel by the light bulb.
I don't know where that came from, but I'll, I'll come get it.
It either has to come from Guy or that other kid. I don't know where else it would come from. Okay, anything else you have on that then?
I, I think I'm good, unless you have any other questions.
Um, the only other ad is just, uh, so Cedar Creek project is done.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and if, I don't know if you remember, we did the road use agreement, and so they had the studies through the county and the state, so they had the pre-existing condition of what it was, and then they would take care of anything that was post their use of it. Anyways, they're cleaning that up, and they had emailed yesterday, so Brian has that, Rex has that, and Dusty Whitehead from the county had offered to come up and walk it if they needed to, and I just kinda go through there and see if they've done anything. I guess there's only two minor spots put up on the hill that they were repairing for the county. And so that's in the works, so if you see people on lock, and so that's just what they're gonna do, see if there's... They're trying to close that out by the middle of the summer.
Well, I thought I heard they were gonna add more up there, so...
Yeah, that's what we got.
Yeah, well, at this stage, the project's done. But Dusty Whitehead, when I called, they had actually, Cedar Creek had reached out to me, um, so, oh, yeah, the county, everything's kosher and good. So I called Dusty directly to verify that, and Dusty said they've been great to work with. And I don't anticipate any problems with that, so... Cedar Creek's the one else?
Yeah.
Now, are they supposed to be doing two more phases? Apparently, they're closing out this chunk of it, so if they do two more phases and need it, they'll do another road use agreement at that time, but this phase is done. So, anyways, that's in the works.
Thanks, Karen. Alright, you're up.
Okay, so, um, I just thought I'd print you out a budget report from the SEC.
Of course.
New numbers, so we're about six months in, cause this is through April. So...
We're in May.
I know, we're in May, but, yeah, April bank statement is all you have. So, the front page, this list of accounts. You have the petty cash account, uh, cash and checking, this is all general, here are the savings, there's your state treasure investment. The rest of the numbers are not relevant under assets, I don't understand outgo, and I'm told I don't need to. If you turn the pages, it's got all your, um, revenue reporting. You have the estimated column, month-to-date, year-to-date, unreceived balance, and then this last column is all your percentage. And I'm assuming, because we're about six months in, everything should be around fifty-ish percent, if we're doing kind of good. Right?
Well, it kinda depends, some of your state revenues and stuff come in periodically.
Yeah.
It's like your tax revenue comes in twice a year, so, you know, depending on how that essentially is here, but otherwise, you're gonna be sort of like...
Yeah. So we've brought in about fifty-five percent of the estimated revenue in general. We put out about thirty-two percent of our estimated revenue. And then turn the page, the list, I wanna say water for last, so we're gonna skip the next two pages. So, fund three, sewer funds. Second to last page, your list of accounts, your checking, your sewer savings, and your state treasure investment, and then the state audit account over connections. And then you turn the page, and there's your revenues, about fifty-one percent in. And then the outgoing sewer, says twenty-five percent, but I did a mistake at the beginning of the year, and the payment for, the loan payment for the sewer, there was one payment that came right in, kinda beginning of October, and when I talked to the auditor, she wasn't super clear in her instructions. She said, "I would just wait until the end of October to kinda update everything," so that payment went on last year's. So, just so you know, it's probably closer to like forty-five percent, fifty percent. So back to water. This is the ugly one. Um, we've talked about how we are going to have to have a significant increase to our bill and make everybody mad and hate us. Um, so I did kind of a little, uh, work up. If we were to increase just water for right now, and we did like twenty dollars bump, that'd be thirty-six thousand more a year, which kinda only puts us still in the window of like a hundred thousand a year in water. But just common sense in my head, water, we have way more expenses, way more maintenance. It really should be higher than sewer. And so I think I personally would lean more towards twenty-five to give us forty-five thousand more a year. And then we'll kinda work with cost of living bumps and watch things for a little while and everything else. That's my opinion. Um, but we do really need to look at this. I mean, we're already like seventy percent out of our estimated revenue in water. Um, the things that hurt us, there's always like about five thousand every month that doesn't get collected. So these estimated, or these actual revenues here to date, that's all that's been collected, right? So then every month there's about five thousand that's in, in, it rotates the few who have the fastest, but. Um, and then we do have a couple of people that are off and don't seem to care. And you know that they're, well, I know that some of them are getting water from other places. They're still using sewer, uh, which kinda leads into the next thing. And that's kinda why I feel like we need to start looking at some of our ordinances and see what needs to be updated. I feel like there should be kind of a consequence, right?
We don't have anything right now.
Well, and one of the things that I've been harping on for years, I think you're getting better at, is shutting them off. I mean, if somebody falls behind. So when I first started kinda coming out here, there'd be people that might be twelve, fourteen, fifteen months behind.
Yeah, when I first came in, there was like a two-page list. Some of the bills were like twelve hundred bucks.
Holy cow, serious stuff?
And not being shut off. And so they just let them get huge. And so, okay, I'm gonna offer forever, but I mean, it's, you gotta, I mean, you know, you get thirty, sixty days out, shut them off.
So my son, he works for the city of Lockwood in the water department. And he's like, if people are not paid by, I don't remember what the date of the month is, like ours is the fifteenth. There's no payment in the box by five o'clock, the fifteenth, they're off. And it's a Friday that they turn off. And then they have to go all weekend with no water before they can be shut on or turned on.
Yeah, I think it's twenty-five dollars for you to get turned back on and, but you got, and, and I think things are getting better. But yeah, when I first started coming out here, there was ridiculous accounts.
So has that been cleaned up mostly?
A lot, yes.
Good.
Like now my back, my list is maybe like this.
Okay.
And there's only like one or two people that are really constant violators of it. And then there's people that have been shut off. There was a lady that we did shut off. She's one, she always waited for Guy to come collect. Well, she got turned off and she was sick. And then she's like, I have kids off home, can you turn it back on? I'll come pay tonight. And I said, no, thanks, I have money. She came in and paid. And I turned it back on, but she was not happy. But I'm like, it's not our job to come collect.
So what are some, there are some of our options we can do when people get turned off?
Yeah, turn off.
If people turn off and they don't care, then what do we do?
Well, so, I mean, eventually it becomes a health problem, but as long as they're not stealing water, you know, the problem is.
But I do know that there are people that have helped the ones specific, like they've been off for almost a year.
Are they getting a hose from the, that hose from?
They worked and went in time until I created a mess and then he, the.
Cause as soon as they start doing that, that's theft of water, running the hose. But you gotta have somebody that's watching for that.
Yeah.
You know, um, but the main thing to shut it off, now you're always gonna have a little bit of problem if you get no meter. If you were reading the meters all the time, you know, then that gets, you know, then it is getting paid, whether or not you're mother. But, you know, you start having the manpower to read meters every month right now.
Worth it.
Have a little, know where they're at.
Yeah. So you're gonna have a little bit of difficulty there, but the getting them shut off timely is huge. That's, that's the biggest thing you've got.
Because, I mean, when the bill gets so big, it's hard for them to come in and pay it all in one shot. You're not doing them any favors by leaving them out.
Do you have a comment? I got a question for you actually. Um, my husband and I go over the road a lot. And him and I are the ones that pay the water bill. Do you guys have a way of taking cards or does it have to be cash or regulars?
Cash check for a month over. And there is a payment drop-off. And I mean, right now the ordinance says three hundred dollars. That's three months, pretty much.
That would answer the issue.
Past due, you have time to get that payment.
Well, I have automatically taken out my.
Yeah, so I was just thinking.
Oh, you can do, you can have that.
Yeah, I was saying.
Who do you think?
The bank will tell a check.
Think of Idaho, Idaho Falls.
I'm pretty sure they have.
They have like a bill, a bill payment, so you can go online and set it up where you can actually look at your phone and pay it.
And the bank will, the bank will, they'll send a check, you know.
Yeah, they mail the A check.
So how do I?
It does take about a week, I feel, like for my experience.
Especially the bank.
Like, cause I have to go through the mail and then I have to meet my Dave, pick him up and find it and take it back to the day. Which I do actually Tuesday and Thursday and make it.
Cause our, um, my husband's checks get direct deposited. Well, his boss gives it to me, where I live. And that's why I was asking, so we can make sure that we can start getting paid every month on time and not fall behind a month or two because we've been out on the road or, or whatever, you know.
And momly been, we didn't even get it.
Yeah. We did get a, I think it was recently.
Yeah.
Okay, I got two. So, yeah, I think that got them.
So we can't, we can't shut their sewers off.
Yeah, enough of others.
Unfortunately, so those.
Well, they're getting water from somewhere, right?
Right.
Right? I mean, so you have to talk to flush it.
So that's unfortunately.
But if you shut the water off, shutting the water off timely will take care of ninety-five percent of your problem. The rest of it's gonna be watching for somebody running the hose and stealing water and, you know.
Now, someone running a hose and asks the neighbor, hey, can I run a hose? And the neighbor gives permission, is that still considered stealing?
You're still able to see.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure.
So in your little packet, there, those are all the ordinances that I found really having to do with the use of our water. And I feel like we need to really look at the connection costs that are in there. Um, and probably update the most. I think we probably should reconsider how much our deposit is going to be with a raise in the bill. I think that when you have a turn on and turn off issue, I think that we should be more to cover Brian's time cause it takes, um, hours maybe.
If I can, sometimes.
Depending on if, if, in the view, if they've parked over it, if they've landscaped it.
There's a lot of landscaping over meters, cause nobody likes them in their yard.
Well, no, in their garden, they're probably.
Couldn't even tell you where mine is. Didn't even know I had one. You know, run them up and come over and try to light it.
I'm gonna be doing that too.
One of, one of the people that was on my shut off list, uh, he was like, I know, I don't know where the meters are on all, all four of these people. I said, well, maybe if you go out, I don't know. You're not calling to pay the bill.
I did, I, I, I went out there.
She's like, I need to open my bill, huh?
And they happen to be parking on theirs.
Seriously, the, on the water thing?
Well, they, over it. They can handle driving them.
Is that the big, like circular?
It's a big round thing like this.
I think mine's in my brick yard, like getting it down.
Our, I have a substitute in there. I don't know if that's his or, or mine. Cause we used to have old, um, tire remotes, when it came along and stole it. But Daryl's really nice, he just landscaped, cause like our lawn mower broke down. So Daryl comes over and landscapes it, keeps it going.
It probably is, it's, I put bricks around like.
But Daryl's a good neighbor, so.
I put a huge rock on.
You wouldn't be the first one.
Well, I'll bet you that's one. I'll bet it's mine or Daryl's, not right there.
You know what, that tree that's just tall?
Our property.
Yes, things right there.
So that's where I would start. We don't park by under anything. Literally, like there's Daryl's spins and it's just like right here.
So I'm sorry to give you a big old packet, didn't come and read, but I think we, we need to do this with a few of our ordinances.
Well, I really like the fact that you, and I don't know if that person's still paying the bill or not, that you drew up a service agreement for them.
And I'm gonna do that with my people.
I like that, because we can turn it into collections, we can do everything, but that doesn't, I mean, clearly they don't have any money.
Right. I, and, and I do put links on a house after thirty days. I give them a warning, so you have ten days to come in. And if they don't, then I will put them on. But again, like, it doesn't bother some people.
Until you, until you take the house.
But like, really, I don't think you.
I don't know what you do.
Well, so the lead is, the lead is, uh, lead is treated just like property taxes.
Yeah.
So if they fall three years behind on the property taxes, then the county starts to tax sale deed. And then through that process, it would eventually get paid, but it's slow. Cause the county doesn't even start that process until you're three years behind.
Yeah.
Um, and then I think we need to talk about goals. Uh, having Brian come in, there's, we're lacking lots of tools. Like the city has like no tools, equipment, or like, I know insurance has it, but there, or it is now, I don't know. Um, the condition of our vehicles and equipment, some is super old. Uh, there's like a big old roller that I think if you even rode it, drove up on our roads, it would probably hurt them more than help them. Uh, the dump truck is a joke to drive, that little white Chevy, there's no floor in it.
It's got an old street sign underneath the front there.
Really?
Right?
I cleaned it out and it was the dirt that was holding all that together. And when I cleaned it all out, there's a big hole. So I put an old street sign in there and put the floor back in.
And like the old dump truck too, like it needs new tires, they're so broken. All of those things are.
They're actually ready to put stone in.
Yeah.
So, I'm not saying right now we need to go out and purchase new vehicles or anything. There is an old, is it a Dodge that's in there?
Yeah, there's records of a Dodge and I don't ever remember.
What's the red, the big red truck?
That's a Chevy.
That's a Chevy. Okay, so Larry had purchased that. And that's usable-ish, is a two-wheel drive.
Yeah, and I, I think we can use it. I, so I, when we say we have excess.
Stuff.
Is that, is that what they call it?
Yeah, excess property, yeah.
Can we decide how we get rid of it when we decide it's excess?
Depends on the value of it. So anything that's excess, the council will say, okay, yeah, it's excess. If it's less than five hundred bucks, you just deal with that, you need to. If it's anything over, you gotta accumulate a bunch of it and have a sale. I think one auction, let people get on it.
So like my old dump truck.
How do we have the auction? Do we have to go through somebody?
No, you can just, so like Blackwood, we did one, what, a year ago, uh, last spring. And you accumulate your list, then you publish your notice and then the, her Blackwood, the treasurer went out and handled the sale. But I mean, that's something you can do. And it doesn't have to be an auctioneer and yada, 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 you know.
Yeah, you just do like a file and auction, right?
No, it needs to be, uh, open auctions, everybody knows.
Oh.
But it doesn't have to be anything fancy, right? It's a vendor and how do you bid, how do you bid, you know?
Okay.
And just get it sold.
So if it's something that, and how do I determine the value on something that's like
Well.
pre-fifties.
You know, you can work, you can work with the internet, you can look real quick.
Okay.
And, and can you get a rough idea? You know, and that's, that's pretty handy on your phones anymore. But, um, and then council will need to approve, yeah, let's get rid of all this stuff. Yeah, there's no reason to talk, like do a bunch of junk around.
I think we've decided the old one, or our situation, that it might be best to have like, it does not be brand new, but a more modern, maybe four-by-four truck, heavy duty, maybe get a dump trailer.
Trailer versus a dump truck, so that.
I don't know.
What are we talking about getting like something for that red truck to put on there to plow the roads?
Yeah.
A sander.
Wow. Which, why is it two-wheel drive? We probably don't want.
Oh, that's two, that's the one, the two-wheel drive? Okay, yeah, you don't wanna do that. That'd be bad.
So, I mean, in the meantime, he can freeze his butt on the tractor.
It is okay. There's, there is another snowplow. I, I'm gonna, as soon as I get it unburied, there's, it's buried behind a bunch of other stuff. There is a smaller snowplow that used to be on our dump truck. Then I'm gonna see if I can't do some metallurgy, penis work and make it fit on the front of the tractor so I can push snow rather than bring it in. We'll see.
These are our goals.
These are some of my goals, but I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna overwhelm you that we're gonna buy all the equipment, I just.
Well, from the, from the bystander point, you gotta start making kind of your priority list.
Right.
So the council can see, you know, let's get some of the low hanging fruit figured out and some of the other things at least could be budgeted for.
The biggest thing is to get rid of some of the old stuff that we're not using, because that could generate.
You know, and when you take a look at the old stuff, just like Blackwood's last year, for example, uh, they had two garbage trucks, you know, they got to weigh what, thirty-five, thirty-eight thousand pounds? Um, they sold by three hundred bucks a piece, cause Blackwood just wanted to get rid of. They only were probably worth fifteen hundred a piece just to drag it up to Mill Creek.
Yeah, we talked about that.
You know, so some of those things, you may just, as a council, say, it's not worth putting out for bed, we'll get anything going, my truck is so horrible. But you'll get, you'll get two hundred bucks for that Mill Creek.
Right.
So that might be the best route.
So do other, it seems like I've heard of before, like, like a bigger city has gotten used to equipment, so they like, do they like sell cheap to one places like this or?
Sure, so anytime, so yeah, as a government, you guys can look around and see what other counties or cities may have. And transferring property from government entity to government entity is very, very easy. So like first with fire, they've been given, and they've got a new ambulance that I think Fremont County is gonna give to them. Um, you know, so that, when it's government to government, those transfers are gonna happen a lot. You know, so you may.
I mean, they like wanting their big truck.
That really big snowplow that is absolutely pointless for this little town
Yeah, we could.
was, was a kind of a gift.
Yeah.
Get rid of that.
Yeah.
Because stuff like that.
They, what are we paying for? Can you put it out on the site?
Well, and I had originally thought, well, well, it would be a good dump truck, but I went out and looked at the dump one and it's, it's not even attached. It's being held onto the frame with chain binders. So when, when they gave it to, I think it was Supreme that gave it to us, I'm not for sure. But they robbed all of, everything, all the wiring, the hydraulics, the, the hinge points. It's literally just sitting on the bed, being, and it's being held there by straps and chains. So the, the expense of getting that to even work as a dump truck is.
For us to get rid of it.
Yeah, it's, it's.
That maybe went for the junkyard or.
Sounds like to me.
The truck, if, if somebody's interested, the truck could be worth quite a bit. It's a pretty good truck. It's just, if it put in all those, a new dump, then it would be. And then it's too big really for what we need.
Yeah, it sounds like you could get rid of stuff.
Another thing to do.
Yeah.
Take a look.
Job security.
I, I had planned on getting pictures of all this so that you can see it. And maybe, maybe one of these days we could have a, what do you call it when the kids go out and?
Tour.
A tour and, and, and take a look at, at my yard and see the stuff that's excess. That you can see firsthand.
Walk through them all a lot back.
I missed them on that time.
I mean, a field trip, yeah. Maybe we could do a field trip one day and, and.
It was worth it. It was very interesting. I found it very informative.
If anytime anybody wants to do a field trip, just let me know. I mean, it is, it's, it's the city stuff. So if the city wants to see it.
It was, it's.
Just let me know, I will show it to you.
So like when Brian's talking to stuff, we've all, like me and Pam have seen it. It's just, it's very handy to know exactly what's happening. I don't know if we missed anything or not, but I knew it, cause like everything.
I was gonna say, sounds like.
Oh, Brian, I've heard some gas tanks, storage gas tanks that were never put up for some reason.
I do have three fuel tanks that stay. I do have three fuel tanks that stands and everything are there. Just never used.
So anyway, is this another thing you can bring up on, look at?
So the twenty-five dollar a month increase in water.
Twenty-five would add forty-five thousand more to your yearly budget, roughly.
Okay, when do we need to do that?
Oh, that was the next thing I wanted to ask, right? Good job. That's up to you guys ultimately.
So is that worth a five percent?
There's gonna be more than a five percent though, right?
Right.
So you're gonna have to have a public hearing.
Right, it has to go through a budget hearing. Um, in my head, I guess, because I know kind of what I had to do last year through this time, I'm thinking maybe like towards the beginning of this little year, after all the other, what kind of stuff? Or would it be better to do it before? I don't know.
I, I mean, well, it depends on if you get it through the end of the year, doing everything to do for the fiscal year is nice, because then you won't have to reopen your budget and then actually.
So do it before.
So I would do it, well, I would do it.
Can we do it with the amended budget?
Well, if you have to reopen your budget anyway, you can do it anytime. But I mean, we're in May, so by the time you get a public hearing.
Can we do two things together?
Sure. We have eight public hearings, we need to. Um, but you're in May, so I mean, you're not gonna have it done, you know, you could maybe squeeze it in the June, but I mean, if you get to July's meeting, well, you're only talking two months again to your, into your fiscal year, I mean.
We will do it with amended budget.
Yeah. So you can get all your pitchforks done in one meeting.
Yeah.
When's the amended budget done?
It'll be before the new budget. So we should probably do that.
Probably by, yeah.
Because what's the state's fiscal year, is it October? Yeah, we don't wanna leave that, I think we should hit them with it in the summer.
Not just before Christmas?
Yeah, exactly. You were on the exact same page as I was, I was like, people will probably still feel better in the summer.
I didn't notice, like, Christmas, our payments were like, uh, I don't know. Yeah.
That's what I would shoot for.
Because Guy's not gonna shut anybody off.
As a citizen who hates pain, but realize is that if you don't pay now, you're gonna pay more later. I think we need to put it up to match everybody else, what, seventy-five dollars a month? The other, other cities are paying for their water.
Well, not all of them.
That'll be more, total report. Um, do you still get the Schiss report every year?
Yeah, I haven't gotten the updated one.
So Schiss Association every year puts out a, like, everybody up.
But I think we need to get up there, you know, sooner than later. Because I know, because, you know, I'm married to an accountant, I've been hammered from accounting and property management and stuff since the month before I got married.
The, the problem is you can use, you can use that report as a comparison to kind of make sure. But this, this council has to make sure it's reasonably related to your costs. So, I mean, it gives you a good bearing that you're reading, your, your analysis should be more focused on the numbers than what everybody else is charging.
Right.
Because it's your budget that you gotta have matched.
And our budget is so far behind because things have kicked in.
Well, somebody sent me, they, they're like, well, Idle Falls is so cheaper. And I'm like, yeah, but I don't want people, like.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's an economy of scale, absolutely. Especially in your sewer. I mean, yeah, there's absolutely an economy of scale.
Yeah, there's more people spread out. So where do we need to, and, is twenty-five gonna be enough to get us?
It's a, yeah, like, I mean, according to Husk and, this is Ted.
I, I honestly don't even remember.
They were saying the state would probably put us, or would tell us, because they were working with other little communities, at seventy-five for water and seventy-five for sewer. And then you have your garbage. That would put us about a hundred and seventy dollars a month. And I look at people online, around here, that's huge. What kind of people they got?
Mm-hmm. So we need to get up to seventy-five dollars a month?
How much is our water?
Yeah, I don't know.
Forty dollars and.
Thirty-nine? That was thirty-nine, and then we're just four percent. Forty, fifty-six.
Yeah.
Forty.
But we need to get to seventy-five.
Yeah, that would be the ultimate goal.
But it, it would be.
But I, and, you know, like, talking to people, they would feel better between twenty to twenty-five. And then, yeah, maybe assess. So that gets us, I don't know.
I'd rather, you know.
It's not high to say.
I'd rather pull the Band-Aid off. Just grab it and rip it and get us to where we need to be so we don't get bitten the fanny.
But there's a lot of people here that struggle, and I know that.
I don't like paying, paying either, but it's like, you know, like I said, it's, I'd rather pay monthly than also.
But at the same time, I did learn too, that our income dynamic has changed in Bay Hills. Because according to Husk, he was saying, like, we used to qualify for help with water study. But we don't anymore.
Be, because we have.
Because people have moved in and have money.
Yeah, people have moved in that have more money than the people that grew up here.
Yeah.
And I'm not trying to point fingers, Gil.
I'm on retirement, so I'm retired by.
People who got good jobs during the pandemic.
Yeah.
Who work for different agencies now, who got a significant raise.
But I do know there has been a lot of people from California moving in.
Yeah, so what that does to our.
Not just you, I'm not the type of people.
I was being snotty.
Yeah, well.
But, so that does, it does make a difference. I mean, there are people in this community that are older and on a fixed income. Much more fixed than you're retiring.
Oh, I got it, let's just charge deals five, ten.
There you go.
That'll solve it.
So you've talked to people in the community.
I have, and talking, and, and I want you guys to talk to people. Like, and if they have any questions, they can come in and talk to me. I'll show them the numbers.
Yeah, I mean, go through the budget, kind of look at it. Ryan, sort of prioritize those together and kind of, and then you guys can weigh those numbers and see where you're gonna be at.
I mean, at, at some point, unfortunately, because some of the things that I'm taking care of now, they would have been cheaper if they'd have been worked on, worked on, and worked on.
And we don't wanna keep being in that situation.
Yeah, and so there's gonna be a big hit for a year, possibly into a second year, to get everything going. And then, then it's gonna settle down a little bit. So you can, hopefully, some of those extra funds that you're gonna, will start.
People have gotten a free ride for a while, having lower water bill. And now it's time to go up here.
What we should have done, the past was raised in the past.
Yeah. If you have done a cost of living all along the way since two thousand, it would be right about about seventy-five.
It's like still having your landline and swapping to a, an Apple fifteen. I mean, because your landline, I mean, you can buy a landline at Walmart for nineteen bucks.
Accorded landline.
Accorded landline for nineteen bucks still. Jumping up to a fifteen hundred dollar phone. I mean, that's what we, I mean, our system is twenty-four years old. And we haven't done anything to it. So twenty years has changed a lot.
Because I don't want everybody to look.
So my, we need to think about that and discuss that under it.
I don't want it to be a rush decision.
Maryland, we're up here, I don't.
I don't understand why I haven't been invited back over, but.
Well, do you still have people living in your tra, I have tried stopping by, and I.
No, think about Glensberry, the trailer is still there.
That makes, can I come on that? Okay, um, the ones that were, that were staying in the trailer, they work in cellars in Glensberry, Napa, all over. And they're usually only here one, maybe two days out of the weekend. When, um, when they're here, they, they hang out in their camper. They don't actually live in it, they don't sleep in it when they're there. They just, they, it's just like their, their room. Kind of, kind of, but they, they, they're not actually living in it, you know.
It's not been that long ago, but he was home for almost a week because he heard his man. So they were there every day. But it's a rule, they're not there. Is that still considered, they're, even if it's just one night a week, they're still living on it?
Well, and I wouldn't say, because to me, one night a week wouldn't be, the problem becomes exactly like the taco with sewer water. Because if they're hooked up to sewer water or something, well, that's two homes.
They cook in the house, they use the bathroom. Yeah, they don't do any of that. They, it's not even hooked to propane or nothing, like.
Like, they, you know, it's free, there's people still there, you know, which don't.
Like, when they, when, when it's nice outside and they wanna hang out or whatever, they smoke, you know, they drink.
They don't smoke when I drink in my home.
Yeah, so they do, they do plug the camper into the house when they're out there so they can have light. But they don't actually live in the camp. They don't actually do any of that kind of stuff when they are. Eventually, we're gonna, um, eventually, we're gonna get that camper out of the front yard.
But there's some of those out of the backyard.
We're gonna try to do more, more yard work.
Knock on wood, hopefully Chuck's home more this summer, that we can get more stuff done. And they're starting to improve, have you been by and seen the fence, you know?
We finally got the one.
That's the fence, that's the dogs can't get out. And so plus, I think.
Yeah.
I'm getting somewhere.
Yeah, we're, we're trying. We've got somebody that's gonna help us.
They're still living in the trailer.
Get campers out of the backyard, the one that's in the, the one in that corner out front. We're gonna get that out of there, we're, you know, we're trying to get all gone and get everything given out, but it just.
Boy, I don't know where he's, so grandma gets in the backyard. You know, with gloves and, and his truck and.
Yeah, I mean, that's been, the thing is, there have been neighbors, but as I said, there's still people over there. So.
They're not there all the time, you know, I mean, you can watch, they just come in.
I don't wanna go sit and park and watch. I have tried to stop by, and I did try calling you, but I don't know if your number's changed since I've had your number in my phone.
She has a hard time with service in the house.
It's been a weird thing.
Chuck and I finally got the internet, so I'm gonna try to feed the internet in the house so that I can figure out how to get her phone hooked up to that so she has better service. And see, welcome to Chuck. But I call her hours, I always have that locked on, if that says anything, stop them, you mean, it's, you know. They got one vehicle left there, the used company vehicle. I don't know how else to prove to you that they're not there, you know.
Hey, well, I feel like, I'm just hope to take words from my children.
And not somebody's gonna go, probably watch them. I don't want doing that either, I don't have time for that.
As we don't want to have any problems with any money or anything, you know, I mean, I know that we've had problems, lots of problems in the past, and my husband and I talk a lot, and he, he's, he's over having problems.
He's growing up.
Finally, sorry, that's for, for Chuck, finally.
Yeah.
I'm gonna tell you, there's still a lot to do, but he's.
But I know it's hard to be told, like, what you can and can't do in your yard, but.
But there's, but there's, there's a line there that people have got applied by, and, and we know that, and we, we need to, we're, there was time, we're working through, we're giving them. It's with Chuck's job.
These kids, assuming we've done one, can I hold?
Not as old as, yeah.
So I'm gonna leave it for now?
Yeah. And then if things do change, I do promise that I will let you guys know. I will get ahold of somebody and.
I will make sure they're gonna put them away in the house and camp them on or something.
Yeah, I mean, we will let you guys know for sure.
For sure.
I appreciate it.
When did the guy understand?
She left a little while ago, uh, she actually had me rewrite her letter. And so that she could give to the cops, because she was trying to get him gone.
There was a whole slew of people down the street earlier. There's like four cops and.
I saw some of that, go by.
Was that part of?
I have no idea, that wasn't part of him leaving, you know.
Okay.
That'd be.
Something happened now.
You know.
Took over the whole corner.
Hey.
So we don't pay the phone?
Yeah, thank you, thank you for coming.
How is it, how is it getting out of town? Can we move this on, Mr.? Oh. Talking about Chuck's. Chuck doesn't bring his, and he lives at April's. But my nephew's gonna be stopping in with his real quick to look at my car. And that's why he just gets around, he'll just be right in. Is that okay, or should I walk him?
I think we would prefer him to park it, like, over at April's. And it's really hard on our roads.
All right.
Yeah, especially if they're low.
Yeah, because the last one that we had actually there was Trevor's. Was when, um, we were talking about it before. That was actually, um, Chuck's cousin, Trevor. And I didn't realize that that's the one that had come in the last time until we got talking about it around the house.
Chuck's usually a part of it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Wow, we took over an hour tonight.
I thought this was gonna be a fast, easy go-in one.
I think those are the ones that probably need us for homework, is the ornaments from the house.
Just take them home and read them and come back, you can mark it up.
I was gonna say, one of the things that, for your water, when people get shut off in the winter time, ninety-nine percent of the time, that heater has to be rebuilt. It freezes.
Then that should be charged to that, I think.
So, as you, as you're looking at that, I, that's the cost that, that I'm concerned. The meters that we have are getting harder and harder to.
Like any, like people.
To get parts for because they're twenty-four years old. I can rebuild them to a point, and if not, I have to buy new ones.
So we're gonna be punished by, for setting them off by our meters?
That's what I'm saying.
I like what Robinson made them here.
Yeah, I think it should go to Harvey.
So it's, what does it cost you to rebuild one? I think, I mean, I think the radio ones down there are like three grand a piece or something like that. But I think the mechanicals are like in the fifteen hundred dollar range, aren't they?
Yeah. They're not cheap.
But does that hurt the city in any way? To have to shut off that meter and have it broken? Does it affect everybody else's water or?
No, only when we go to turn it back on.
They're made to cost out.
It's, it's a, it's a frost plug, basically. It's designed that, it, it's four bolts, you pull the back off, you replace the guts on it, and you slap it back together. It's.
Okay, so the city itself, with other earth, it's sort of gonna be affected?
It's, it's only, only when we turn it back on.
Okay.
So just, as you're looking at those ordinance, keep in mind, I, I can get you an exact number.
That would be good, because I think that's something we should like.
I think if you put them in the newsletter, like, hey, by the way, if you.
I, I agree with you.
Because I think you have, I think legally, you would have to let them know, because you can't just be like, we turned the water off, you've worked it, pump it down, you're liable.
I think they're, they're, I think that's part of our workhouse.
And I think plenty of people know that didn't replace it.
Do we have to add that to the ordinance?
Yeah.
And not only, not only fee for, the new meter, fee for installing it as well.
Yeah, well, I think that's part of what they were raising the.
The bar.
Yeah, the turn on fee to, to match what we're gonna raise.
Well, the turn, turnout fee in summer is gonna be different than the turnout fee in the winter, you have to replace the meter, so there's gonna be time having to replace the meter.
Yeah, no, you could turn it off in the summer, I can break.
That's, I think that's part of the reason why Guy didn't like to turn it off, especially in the winter, is because it does cause some damage. And then he was the one that had to go and fix it when he, to turn it back on.
He was creating work for himself.
So I, I understand, because I really don't wanna go and turn, they are a pain to change. I mean, you're standing on your head turning pipe wrenches.
Oh.
I mean, it's, they're not fun and I don't wanna have to do that.
Yeah, if you can tell us what they are, then we can like.
So Guy, I, I used up the last of my rebuilt kit, so I, that was, I was supposed to do it today, but I was chasing a radiator today.
So I'm thinking that when we bring that up and have Brian tell us that, we need to put in, Garrett, tell me if we can do this or not. Can we put something in our ordinance that taking water from another house?
And I think you do, we gotta double check.
Okay, and let's make sure they know that too.
Yeah, cause that's a theft of water.
Yeah, cause our neighbor was doing, okay, because I didn't know that was a theft of water, I had no, I thought, well, they can just take somebody else's house, what are they gonna do? Let's, that person's walking, I did not know this is that.
So it's, it's the equi, it's the same thing as cutting the lock on your meter.
Okay, that's good to know, we didn't know that.
Even if it's giving willingly, it's, it's technically.
I think that a bunch of people do not know that, cause.
And, I mean.
Yeah, I'm hoping they'll be sitting here.
Basically, I mean, we could, if we were metering like he said, I mean, obviously whoever's giving them water is gonna feel the, the broken it.
Right, okay.
And that's, that's where we're gonna get there.
Put in the bill, like towards the winter time, if you get behind and we have to shut your water off and. That's what I mean, I think when. Breaks, then you will have to pay, that's what we have to put in the order, ordinance.
That's what you need to find out what that's gonna cost, cause obviously if it's, you know, three or four hundred bucks, eh, you better, you know, if you're, like I said, that might be too much of a penalty. Anyway, let's balance that out, cause nobody's gonna be able to afford to do that.
Exactly, that's why I would have known, let's put costs in.
Yeah, we need to know that, yeah, if it's three hundred bucks, I think, you know, you might get a hundred of them from them if they can pay, but three hundred might be too much.
That's not, that's not right, you know.
I'll get exact numbers from.
Thank you for.
Well, you know, on your priority list, obviously I'd be moving to waters, the automatic.
The digital, yeah. And that would, so, we, we've had pros and cons with that SCADA and we talked about having SCADA that's in the cloud, you know, and that's kind of scary. The dial-up and the, and the radio antenna is way less scary, but unfortunately, all the new meters. Like the meters for the wellhouses that we're supposed to be putting in, they're all digital.
That's just it.
So it would actually, in, in the future, and whether it's in my time or whoever comes after me, in the future, those meters. I walk in here and I push a button and I read it. It's sent right to my SCADA, cause we're on my phone.
You guys aren't unusual, so everybody doesn't read their meters, most of our folks don't read their meters, they're starting to. But mine was new, like, you know, the digital's, your customer, all the patrons can get on and see exactly what their water flow is.
Ooh, I would like that.
So yeah, you can see, and not only that, like, like Robert was telling me, Robert Loftus was saying, somebody is, he can actually shut them off for this one.
Oh, I didn't know that, but they have some alerts when there's a problem, so if you have a homeowner that's always using two hundred and twenty gallons a day, and also the spice to six hundred, they'll alert.
So I can go knock on the door and say, hey, something's going on.
Your plant's leaking or something, you know, you're using a lot of water.
So there's pros, there's pros to having the new cloud stuff, that's kind of scary for hackers and all that.
Another thing we need to keep thinking about is water project, we're doing that.
Water project or what?
Like, getting that, a little bit of the time on our own.
Four meters?
And all of it, like.
Yeah, I don't, I don't understand what you're saying.
So, you know, we've had people come in and walk through, like Cal Jones came today and Husk has been through, the guy from Iowa, rural water, whatever. Yeah, to kind of assess, like where we're really at, do we really need to like upgrade everything and do a whole big water project again? Is it time for that?
We can get a grant for it.
Listen, Husk already needs a grant for something. Husk was working on a sewer study, but honestly is kind of, sort of, I don't know. I mean, I guess you have to have them done every so often, but, and he's even said, there's no way you're gonna get money for it again, because of her.
So I thought the last time we talked, he was talking about something for water.
I think it was to, I think they were putting a grant for the water study together, wasn't it? Did your water study was too old?
Could have been.
Well, I, he didn't have to talk to about water.
He, he was wanting sewer numbers when he talked to me last, so he was still wanting sewer numbers.
So yes, we have talked to him about water, um, but I think of the last meeting that he was here, like, we kind of talked about. Jeff saying it's best that maybe we just work that on our own, and so I guess we just have to be sure where we are, where that decision really is at.
Back to your priority list.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's, I mean, we can.
I mean, cause you're gonna have to have, like, yes, you get grant money, which helps you pay for some of it, but it's also gonna be a loan. And then you have another loan payment, you're still paying on the first water project from two thousand.
How much longer do we have on it?
Five years.
Well, I'll tell you, so just last night, cause cover and associates did the water study for first, and what they wanted upgraded for them. Um, and that was a ten million dollar project, the only gravity it was available, we got about four point six out of cover, so it's still be, you know, four point four, five point four million dollar loan. You know, first one, uh, you know, it had a hundred and eight dollars a month to do a water bill.
Oh.
And I'm too like, DQ has had the grant money available for little things, like.
Yeah, like half a million, which is more, doesn't cover very much.
Okay, that, that would cover like some of the repairs, little, little things, it wouldn't redo the whole thing, but.
Just get that.
That's your longest meeting ever, man.
Not my fault.
My motion to, like, yeah, for adjourn.
All second.
Favor.
All in favor?